It's not only that. He's smarter than us. He's smarter than us. Make sure you throw that in there. Get some lunch, get a repeding. We have a.
No. Thank you, thank you very much.
The two of us. Yes.
Yes.
They just want to.
He just would fix something. There's no. There's no. Oh. I'm over it. Yeah. Thank you, thank you very much. I don't know.
The two of us. Steve, so I just need them.
Yes.
Yes.
They just. 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 He just wants to. He just. He just would fix something. He never had to be left. He got it.
So. Now I can help. Oh. I love that. I love that. I love that. I love that.
They're just like. 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 We're in the middle of. And then we start here and that's. Yeah, and I learned a lot.
Oh, good. He's the. He's the. He's the. He's the. He's the. Oh, yeah. Yep. Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
They are now. We're.
Are we all? We all? Can I ask you? Chris, that's. Chris, that's. Or. Like, I don't know. So. I'm sure the public. I'm sure the public. I'm sure the public. I'm sure the public.
No, I tried to. Fly back to. Come back here. Come back. Come back. Just question.
All right. Yeah. Yes. See, that's. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Amy's best.
And of course she was. She was. And. 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 This is. Back.
There you go. There you go. There you go. Water.
It was different when I. I didn't. I didn't. I didn't. I can ask. I think that. That's how they. They usually get. Yeah. On.
What you're feeling on. Trying. This. Well, they.
Well, they. Right.
Yeah, like. They got. They get it today. Tell them that they have the prayer.
It's like. It's. Conversation. I mean. It's. It's.
It's. It's. It's. Yeah.
It was. It was. It was. It was.
Now, I. 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 Well. Call you. No. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. There's. Right. Yeah. Yeah. She gets. I asked her.
Was, you know, she was. She got to do. She got to say. She was. She was. She was. Yeah, she said. I guess. I get. Yeah. I don't know.
He just wanted my. Sorry. I'm sorry. He's. 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 He's.
We're in the. We're going. So. The thing was not me.
Everyone.
And. They must have. They're either. Yeah. Oh, no. Okay. First. Actually. Yeah. 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 Exactly. So he's the attorney.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it should be, uh. Secretary of. Okay. They're. 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 Yeah. 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 So. Shoot. You. Yeah. Shoot. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. 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 Okay.
It is now five thirty P M. time for the regular meeting of the council. No, that doesn't. Will call shows all council members appear. There is a copy of the Open Meetings Act posted by the entrance to the council chambers and is available on public review. We're going to have notification with Jamie Mockley tonight.
That's great. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time to gather together. We thank you for those that stepped up and helped make decisions or have been able to go to work every day so that we have a city that. Living. Heavenly Father, we just ask that you view those making decisions tonight, be in our conversations and be in our thoughts. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
We'll do the pledge. I pledge.
Let's do the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With all this meeting to order, do we have any announcements and recommendations to that?
Just one announcement that I have. Um, we do have a parks board meeting that's scheduled for this upcoming meeting today, which is June eighteenth at noon. That'll be at the senior center. I hope we let that know.
I want. Good.
Okay. Good. Yeah, I don't know if it's.
Counsel.
I have an announcement. Okay.
After five years, on this Friday, I'm going to go pick up Boy Trance.
Oh. Very happy. Wonderful. It'll be good to see him. Yes. Yes.
That's all.
Okay. We're going to have a public hearing regarding the amendment to the redevelopment plan for the Wagner Auto Redevelopment Project.
I move to recess as the city council convenes a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment regarding the amendment to the redevelopment plan for the Wagner Auto Redevelopment Project with the city manager to act as hearing officer.
I'll accept that.
Any discussion, counsel? All those in favor vote yea, post nay. To me. To me, to refresh this.
Why do these computers hate me so much?
I don't know.
It's mutual. I hate their guts too.
There it goes.
There we go.
My votes cast Jane, no votes cast nay.
Okay. Um, we have six exhibits tonight. The first exhibit is the city manager's report, um, two pages. Uh, the second exhibit is the notice of public hearing, which is one page. Uh, exhibit number three is the copy of mailed notice. Uh, that's one page. Exhibit number four has five pages. That's the notice of public hearing. Those mailed to each of the required, uh, taxing authorities. Uh, exhibit number five is the amendment to the redevelopment plan of the city of McCook for the Wagner Auto Redevelopment Project. That's thirteen pages. And exhibit number six is a copy of the planning commission meeting minutes, uh, from the June ninth. Planning commission meeting. That's two pages. We'll take all, uh, again, it's one through six, uh, offer them and then accept them. Uh, and with that, we'll go through and start, uh, the public hearing. Um, I'll go ahead and I'll just give a quick background, uh, of the redevelopment plan. Uh, as this council is familiar with and is aware, in two thousand thirteen, we did a large blight and substandard study that stretched from Highway eighty-three all the way to East Eleventh Street. Uh, it captured, uh, a number of different areas that, uh, fit within the blight and substandard designation that the Nebraska Community Development Law sets out. Um, the intent of the blight and substandard study was to try to improve the conditions that existed that, uh, presented the, uh, blight and substandard, uh, designation, uh, for this area. And redevelopment area number three, uh, has been the site of a number of different projects that have occurred over the course of the past twelve years. Uh, this particular request comes from Wags Properties LLC. Uh, we've had a chance to go through and take a look at the request itself and from our observations, the request meets the requirements established pursuant to Nebraska Community Development Law. Um, the project, uh, is on a larger, I guess, the, the project site area is a large unapproved lot that sat unapproved for ages. Uh, I want to say, uh, that on the south side, there would have been a feed store and a Larry Raffenspern's feed store that was down there. Uh, no longer there, it's the foundation that's still, uh, in existence. To the north of there, it's an unapproved lot and it's changed hands a few times over the years. Uh, last time would have been two thousand eight. Uh, it sat in the same state for a period of time. Uh, one of the reasons why it sat in the same state is because it's very costly to get, uh, the infrastructure that's going to be needed to develop that land. And so, uh, it just is kind of set. And, uh, it's a, a location that's very noticeable, very observable from the highway, uh, an area that needs to be developed, but for whatever reason, it has not been developed. And that's why it fits within the context of the community development law. Uh, the developer intends to construct approximately, uh, forty-one thousand hundred square foot automotive dealership building related to improvements. Um, the lot is large enough to accommodate the plan. The one thing that we noted while we were going through the, the review process was it was fairly apparent the TIF is needed for this project for it to move forward. Um, when we go through and look at the redevelopment plans, we just make sure that all of the requirements that the state has, redevelopment plans are included in there. Uh, one of the things that you have to note are the TIF eligible improvements and the expenses associated with them. And you can find those on page four and five of the plan. We'll. Move down. Yeah. And there are a total of one million five hundred thousand dollars approximately in eligible expenses and costs. Um, redevelopment plans require a number of different, uh, elements to be proven up. Uh, probably the most important thing that I like to take and look at is the cost benefit analysis that basically illustrates how the tax shift is going to be broken down. Um, currently, the property is valued at two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. We could probably go down to exhibit C. There you go. So the estimated base, uh, project area valuation right now is two hundred eighty-five thousand eight hundred sixty-two dollars. Um, upon completion of the project, it's estimated that the valuation will jump up to six million eight hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. So the difference between those two numbers is six million six hundred thousand dollars. With an estimated tax levy of one point six seven eight seven five two, it's estimated, estimated that the annual tax shift, uh, that will be produced by that incremental increase is around a hundred ten thousand dollars. Uh, which, based upon the, uh, seven percent interest rate and the expected capture over that course of, of time, we believe that it'd be about one million ten thousand dollars of total TIF that will be eligible for TIF expenses. So we'll be able to fund the entire one point five million dollars. It can fund up to one million ten thousand dollars. And that's just an estimate. You know, Chris and I have spoken about this. It's just our best guess based upon, uh, what we think those valuations may look like. The assessors have been a part of that process. And, um, we try to make sure that we're as close to what that number is going to be so that way there isn't a whole lot of variation one way or the other. Um, one thing that the redevelopment plan requires us to focus on is the city's comprehensive plan and making sure that it actually fits within the context of the comprehensive plan. Uh, we went back through, took a look at the comprehensive plan, uh, and then also looked at the plan itself. Uh, it talks about on pages seven and eight, how the plan fits within the context of the comprehensive plan. Uh, we also make sure that we deal with any of the statutory requirements as far as what you're wanting the redevelopment plan to achieve. Um, and then also making sure that you aren't, uh, disproportionately affecting individuals, uh, that could be negatively impacted by, by the plans of orientation. We're comfortable that this plan isn't going to have any of those negative kind of effects. It's really not going to displace anybody. Um, we think in the long term it's going to make it so we're going to have, uh, additional economic opportunities as a result of this. There is going to be substantial private investment in this project. It's not all just public. It's, it's going to be primarily private. And that's the one thing you always want to make sure that you take a look at is that ratio of private to public, which is going to be a significant, um, uptick, private to public. Uh, so at the end of the day, this makes a lot of sense. It's going to be something that I think is going to be a, an economic driver along the Highway eighty-three corridor. Uh, for the longest time, we've been trying to make efforts to develop Highway eighty-three, whether it's this project or the sports complex project or the hotels or whatever the case may be. Um, you know, there've been a lot of efforts that have been made to try to make sure that Highway eighty-three is developed. Um, that's where people want to go. And that's where you see a good chunk of our population, um, as far as the traffic count, still traveling on a daily basis or people that are coming into McCook, they're coming out of Highway eighty-three, uh, in that area, south to sixteen thirty-four at that intersection. And so it makes a lot of sense. Um, and I appreciate the fact that the redevelopment plan got done timely and in a timely fashion. Um, aside from that, I don't know, Chris, is there anything that you want to share?
I'm just, uh, glad you guys are taking a look at it and, uh, I'm glad that TIF is an option for us because it wouldn't happen if we didn't have that. Um, but no, we're, this has been something we've talked about for a long time and, uh, it's finally coming to, uh, it's, it's going to happen. So, yeah. But no, I just appreciate you guys being here to look at it. You guys have any questions for me? I don't know.
Well, and the one thing that, that I always want to make sure to point out is during the time of the TIF, you're going to end up having a period where we collect taxes on the original base valuation of two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. So it's going to be that same amount, but at, at the expiration of that, that time period, it's a fifteen year time period. We'll get to the contract here in a little bit. But after that, the six million eight hundred thousand dollar of the valuation goes out of the tax roll. So you start collecting property tax, not about two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, you collect on six million eight hundred thousand dollars. And that's where that growth factor really starts to come into play.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
You want to adjourn? Hmm? Okay. Um, I move to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene as the city council.
Second.
Okay. This. We are reconvening as the C D A, right?
Still state council. This is just.
We're. Oh. Yeah. Okay. Got it. Okay. Any discussion, counsel? Thank you. Thank you for investing in our community. Thank you for helping us continue to grow. We appreciate that. Okay. All those in favor vote yea, post nay. I votes cast Jane, no votes cast nay. Okay, next item on the agenda is the meeting of the Community Development Agency recesses the city council convene.
Move to recess as the city council convene as the Cook Community Development Agency for consideration of C D A agenda at five forty-four P M.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion, counsel?
This action item is just a mandatory action item pursuant to the community development law. The C D A makes a recommendation to either approve or disapprove of the plan, uh, to the city council, but ultimately the city council makes the ultimate decision on this. You're just making a recommendation. I don't.
Put it perhaps.
You just go ahead and.
Turn it down. Oh, on the motion to. Start.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Yes. I don't.
Okay. All those in favor vote yea, post nay. I votes cast Jane, no votes cast nay. So again, I have to say a copy of the Open Meetings Act. Is posted at the entrance of the council chambers and is available for public review. I call this meeting to order. We're going to adopt resolution number C D A twenty twenty-five dash oh one recommending approval of an amendment to the redevelopment plan for the city of McCook, Nebraska, including the Wagner Auto Redevelopment Project.
Move to adopt for resolution number C D A two zero two five dash zero one recommending approval for the amendment to the redevelopment plan for the city of McCook, Nebraska, including the Wagner Auto Redevelopment Project.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion, counsel? Okay. All those in favor vote yea, post nay. I votes cast Jane, no votes cast nay. Okay, we need to recess as a community development agency.
Move to recess as the McCook Community Development Agency and reconvene as the McCook City Council.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor vote yea, post nay. I votes cast Jane, no votes cast nay. Next item on the agenda is to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twelve approving an amendment to the redevelopment plan for the city of McCook, Nebraska, including the Wagner Auto Redevelopment Project.
I move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twelve approving an amendment to the redevelopment plan for the city of McCook, Nebraska, including the Wagner Auto Redevelopment Project.
Second.
Any discussion, counsel? Okay. All those in favor vote yea, post nay. I votes cast Jane, no votes cast nay. Okay.
There we go. I. I move to recess as. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay. I move to recess as, as the McCook City Council and reconvene as the McCook Community Development Agency.
Second.
Any discussion?
I thought Shrek. I've been checking them off.
All those in favor vote yea, post nay.
I've lost the space.
Okay. We're doing it all good. I votes cast Jane, no votes cast nay. Okay, next item on the agenda is to adopt resolution number C D A twenty twenty-five dash oh two authorizing and approving a redevelopment agreement including reduce tax increment financing for the Wagner Auto Redevelopment Project.
I love Ted.
Okay. Zoom.
Okay. Any discussion?
Second.
Got it? Okay.
So this is the actual contract between, um, the city of McCook and, and Redeventor, uh, which the Redeventor, uh, Mr. McCook, the Wags Property LLC. Like I mentioned earlier, it's going to be a fifteen year time period or earlier if the valuation comes back higher and gets paid off quicker. It just depends on where that valuation comes in at. Um, the debt, you know, I always tell people, make sure that you understand that the debt's not an obligation of the citizens of the city of McCook. So if there's a short haul due to a valuation that's less than what you anticipated, it's going to be the, the obligation of the Redeventor to make up that difference. Um, the, uh, redevelopment agreement is, uh, the, uh, piece of the puzzle that sets the obligations for both the city and the Redeventor. Um, we issue a promissory note, the Redeventor, Redeventor purchases the promissory note. The problem, then the Redeventor makes a number of different promises to assure that over the period of that fifteen years, the proper steps are being taken to make sure that the debt is getting paid down the way it's supposed to, utilizing that tax increment difference. And then the expiration of that, that, that property that will go back out of the tax roll as a regular piece of property, not subject to TIF. And the city would collect it against, uh, that new valuation. Um, as far as the, uh, completion date, uh, it's anticipated that completion is going to occur, uh, December thirty-first or twenty twenty, uh, sorry, September thirty, sorry, December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. Um, also, uh, there are some things that we're going to have to do on our end as far as making sure that we can buy, uh, the, the taxes. So a notification will be given to the county that, hey, at this point in time, anything over and above three eighty-five thousand dollars is going to get treated, uh, pursuant to the terms of this contract. Um, there are certain things that, uh, Wags Properties LLC is promising. They're not going to challenge valuations, uh, that would be, uh, a lesser amount than that six million eight hundred thousand dollars. We want to make sure we keep that number up there to try to generate that increment to pay off the promissory note. Uh, there are certain, uh, indemnification requirements. This is not an obligation of the city. It's an obligation of the developers, so we're not going to be responsible if anything were to happen on that side. Um, if there were issues, uh, there is a provision which allows us to go ahead and, uh, capture on a default. Um, never had an issue like that during the course of any of the projects that we've done. Um, aside from that, uh, it's standard, it's the same contract that we've seen with other projects that we've done. Uh, Andrew Willis is the attorney that helped us out with this. He did a really good job. I'm not this great, but he's all within the state of these projects. So I'm comfortable that we're in compliance with the state's law. I'm comfortable with the terms. I think that, um, Chris has had enough pain to go through with it. I think he's comfortable with the terms. And with that, I go ahead and turn it over to the council.
Okay. All those in favor vote yea, post nay. I votes cast Jane, no votes cast nay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to adjourn the McCook Community Development Agency.
Move to adjourn the meeting of the McCook Community Development Agency at five fifty-two P M. and to reconvene as the McCook City Council.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor vote yea, post nay. I votes cast Jane, no votes cast nay. Okay, next item on the agenda is to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash thirteen approving the redevelopment agreement for the Wagner Auto Redevelopment Project and authorize the Community Development Agency to enter into the said agreement.
Move to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one three approving the redevelopment agreement for the Wagner Auto Redevelopment Project and authorize the Community Development Agency to enter into said agreement.
I second that. Is there any discussion, counsel? All those in favor vote yea, post nay. I votes cast Jane, no votes cast nay.
You're right, Chris.
There you go.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I heard a hundred minutes on this.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda and it's approved on one motion. Any item listed on the consent agenda made by the request of any single council member or public in attendance be considered as a separate item under the regular agenda. Counsel.
I have nothing to pull your. Nothing. I have nothing.
Staff? Anybody in the public want to pull anything? Okay.
On the, uh, consent agenda, I make a motion that we adopt items A through G.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion, counsel? All those in favor vote yea, post nay. I votes cast Jane, no votes cast nay. On to the regular agenda.
Here we go.
We have a presentation from Emma Castor with West Central Development, Nebraska Development History, in regards to properties identified to be in violation of McCook's Code of Ordinances.
Hi, Emma, can you hear us? Here I am.
Here I am, you, Emma.
There we go, now can I hear you?
Yes.
Perfect, can you guys see my PowerPoint?
No.
I'm screen sharing, is it not working on your end? How do you do?
We just need to cast it, thank you.
I'm sorry.
When it says PID zero zero eight zero one zero zero, what is that?
That's the parcel number that the county has assigned to those lots.
The county, not actually. No, I did not. I learned something, did I? All those properties that listed as being in violation.
Okay. First, I'll just start by introducing myself. My name is Emma Castor, and I'm going to be your new nuisance officer for McCook. I'll be presenting the nuisance program tonight. Just a little bit about West Central. We are one of eight development districts in Nebraska. We serve eighteen counties, fifty-eight communities. And at the beginning, we funded just over sixty-six million. So if you guys have any funding projects, I need to bring I know the numbers. So this particular PowerPoint is pretty lengthy. I hope everybody had a chance to look through it. Correct? Does anybody have any questions on any of the properties in particular?
I don't think so.
No, okay. So just to summarize, we have two hundred and forty properties that we reviewed. I sent two on one hundred and twenty-five Percy letters, cleared fifty-seven properties. Nine properties have extensions as of right now, and sixty-nine properties to declare a nuisance. And then these are all the agenda items. And for the sake of time, I will not go through this PowerPoint if you guys are okay with that. If you've all had a chance to look. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. If you have any particular properties you want me to look at right now on the slideshow.
I did a good job of getting pictures and labeling them in a way so that way we can exactly where the issues were with each one of those. So thank you.
No problem.
I recognize it was a lot of work to get rid of those properties, so thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Maybe the one thing that I would like to say, Emma, so the city of McCook, we budget plus thirty-five thousand or forty thousand dollars. I think it was forty thousand this past year through our general funds. So that's property tax dollars and sales tax dollars to go towards abating these nuisance abatement properties. And we use about half of that to go ahead and have West Central help us. The city of McCook does the rest. So West Central takes on a district. They're actually focusing on the southeast part of town in the city of McCook, then we do the remainder of town. So I've seen something on Facebook to the extent where, yeah, you know, we're hiring a different outside fund to do this for us. There are some challenges. Every community has challenges when it comes to nuisance abagements. And Emma and her group, they're taking care of one part, we're taking care of another part. We still have some additional funds that we're going to set aside for a project. It's a demolition project on West First Street. But it's imperative that people take care of their own properties. That is not a function of government to do that. That is the function of the individual to take care of their own properties. So we would not have to expend these dollars on this if it weren't for the fact that people didn't do. If people would do what they're supposed to do, we wouldn't have to. So I just want to make sure I clarify that. And like I said, I saw that on Facebook, or I don't have Facebook, but I heard about it on Facebook. It needs to be clarified that we aren't just running around doing nothing. Emma's group is trying to make sure that they handle a portion, we're doing a portion. And we're doing our best to make sure that we make McCook as great a town as we possibly can. But it really falls on the shoulders of the individuals to take care of their own stuff.
Well said, and our ultimate goal is for everybody to get cleaned up versus being abated. So, you know, we are willing to give those extensions and help people in the process, definitely.
How long are the extensions for?
We usually do about three weeks to thirty days. It kind of just, it falls in with like the meetings and when we send our letters out and when we do our reviews. So anywhere from twenty-one to thirty.
I'm glad we got the fifty-seven cleared ones then. We got fifty-seven of them cleaned up, that's good.
That's good.
That really is a good number, yeah.
And usually people, when we ask them to, they will comply. Not always.
Hey, anything else? Thank you, Emma. Thank you for a great presentation, we really appreciate this.
Oh, thank you for having me.
Keep up the good work.
Thanks, Emma.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, approve it, approve it.
That's right, okay. All those in favor vote.
Oh, we got it, we got a motion. I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty five dash eleven approving the designation of nuisance properties deemed by the West Central Nebraska Development District and as declared in the resolution.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor vote yea post name.
My vote's Cash Jane, no vote's Cassane.
Next item on the agenda is to discuss a first addendum to lease between the city of McCook and Southwest Nebraska Family Resource Center for additional portions of the Old Public Safety Center located at five twenty-six West B Street.
This is just a discussion? Okay. And Jean, Jerry, do you'd like to start?
Go for it. I know you guys went out there and took a look at the facility.
I did too. What a wonderful job. You're doing a wonderful job. I was impressed with the cleanliness of it, I was impressed with everything so organized. Thank you for all you do for our community that way.
And you do need the additional space that you're asking for too, so. I think we've worked out a reasonable agreement. It's up to you, I mean, it's comparable to what Swinton does, we rent the auditorium. And so it's just an annual, every year, there's an annual increase and.
Well, and Leah's been working on that, apparently Leah can talk about what she's found.
Yeah, and Jean is right on what we came up with. It's a dollar forty-nine per square foot, so that made the overall charge to be the per square footage for. There it is, be six hundred and seven dollars per month. Oh wait, I'm reading over on. It is five hundred and twenty-one dollars per month, that's based on one forty-nine per square foot. And then it would have the three cents per square foot increase each year. On the other half of it, the original agreement was that they would pay the three hundred dollars a month that would cover the utilities. And in that respect, when I went back and figured out what the utilities are that we have for the whole month down there, it is six hundred and seven dollars per month. But that's shared between the Public Works Department and the city of McCook. So if you divide that in half, that's only three hundred and four dollars, so the three hundred dollars is covered utilities, so.
So there's a variation.
There is a variation between the two, so that's why we presented it. You may decide which direction you would like to go.
And I don't know what the Family Resource Centers, and this would probably be a good thing to know what your finances are like.
So there's a little bit of variation here because of, we just finished our fiscal year, but I just also got the taxes done on the calendar here, so for fiscal year up till Friday, when I composed these, we have spent fifty-eight thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars. And for our calendar year, when we filed our taxes, we received sixty-three thousand dollars in donations last year. So we are, we are tight, I won't pretend. We are working, getting some grants done, but so many of those are earmarked for specific projects, which I'm enacting. But it's not something that we can take and just put towards rent or wages or something like that. I also have a concern for next year. We had spent, this year, we actually went under budget on wages because of Kathy's departure. There were several months where no one was filling her position. And so we spent thirty-five thousand dollars in wages this year, which is under budget, but with the increase in Nebraska minimum wage, I have projected just a little over fifty thousand dollars next year in wages. And that's sixty-two hours a week in wages. So we're, we're not going to pretend things aren't tight. We're making some changes and seeing how that goes. But the big thing is, we do need the space and work to bring in some of these changes and some of these projects. I did just get a grant from the McCook Community Foundation. It does allow me to purchase the Love and Logic course, which is a parenting course specifically towards teens who have gone through trauma, helping foster parents, things like that. We also did just receive a grant, I'm sorry, a donation of a computer. And staff has been trained now to learn how to help people apply for SSI, SSDI, DHJ, RAS benefits, unemployment, things like that, so that we can further assist the community.
I remember this was brought to the city, it was that area, but actually at the time you were located, not you, but the Family Resource Center was located over at the Old Baptist Church. And that was being converted into a residential facility, and so they had nowhere else to go. And so they actually came to us and asked for consideration to locate a deal of Public Safety Center. There is value with having them there in addition to whatever it is that you decided you wanted to charge. It's nice to have somebody there so we know what the condition of the property is, because otherwise we would not know. They've been really good about sharing that information with us, so. And then, as you guys know, we use the bays for public works. Some other things as well too. Mark might even have some old cots somewhere.
They may be there, they may be there.
I don't know if he has.
I don't think he's gotten it yet.
And I did verify that the city, the parks that we are keeping, those are the only parks that we really have need in. And I don't know that it really wants to jail part of it, so we're stuck with that.
It's so disjointed, because you've got people that are talking about trying to rent out that north side, but finding bathrooms, finding, I mean, it's not easy. So it probably wouldn't be beneficial to any other tenant, just because that north side really is best used for storage purposes. All the way rental property going into McCook nowadays, maybe out of just three apartments, you'll jail without.
We make you something somehow, somehow, right? Oh yeah, I'm going down to jail. You're pretty ugly.
Okay. Katie, did you talk to your board about this addendum, does it look good to them?
They're aware of it.
They are aware.
But we haven't been able to meet as, they have not been able to meet as a board yet.
Okay. So when your board gets together, you want to let us know if you want to go further with it?
Well, and I think we probably need some direction from the council as far as what you want. We presented two different two different amounts that they would pay to us in rent. We presented the utilities, and we also presented the square footage, because we talked about how squint it does it. They obviously are providing a service that is very essential to our community. I know as a former attorney who had clients that utilized that, it really does serve the underserved. So I don't know if that's something this council will take into consideration or not.
Katie did acknowledge that she was aware that it would go up, just probably not quite so much, so.
I mean, I look at it as a service that helps our community. So I'd like to see something maybe a little bit more manageable, obviously with the budget. I know it's hard, and I know we don't want to just put the taxpayers on as a bill, but I think it's something that's good for the community and we need to have some. You know, I think a little bit of leeway, move from three hundred to six hundred, that's kind of a, that's difficult to do. And maybe we can figure out a way to to buffer that a little bit, maybe not raise it all to six hundred and have maybe an, you know. Over time to help. I know, Gary, like you said, you're worried about the taxpayers, but I understand. At the same time, it's really big for a community service to take one all at once, especially a tight budget that you have.
Okay.
Do you guys have any other ideas?
I agree with you.
Okay, do you have a figure, or you want to let Nate work with Katie?
I think Nate and Katie work together and bring a better value to us.
Will that be okay?
I'll agree with that.
Are you too? Okay. All right, well, we really appreciate all you do.
How soon will you want me?
I can see if they can do an emergency meeting, or if I can get them to do a vote by email. I can see if we can have an answer by the next council meeting.
Are you thinking next council meeting or true council meeting?
Just depends on what we've got going on. We'll get together with them and try to get something back. For right now, we're just working with a quality. So we'll make it work.
Yeah, I don't think you need an emergency meeting, just whatever, you can get together. Not a good deal.
Okay.
You've mentioned a personal work, my suggestion for an increase, we're open to that.
Yep, I'd be happy to, if you guys have some thoughts.
He just emails.
That would be great.
All right, we can do that. Okay, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is to consider the approval of a request to lose ACE funds in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars from Southwest Nebraska Freedom Festival for the Fourth of July fireworks display. Or do you want to talk to Jamie? Jamie, do you want to talk about it?
I'm not doing it.
You're not?
She's the more responsible.
So Southwest Nebraska Freedom Festival, we bring about five thousand people average for that evening. Last year, maybe a little less, because there seemed to be a little rainstorm right in the middle of it. We still did have our fireworks, but this was a need that we all are working on. We have a committee of about six to eight that worked on this for about six months. It's a need that the community had, like McCook did not have fireworks, like they were going elsewhere. So it's something we've brought in. We have wonderful sponsors over the years, and we do this strictly by sponsorship. Like if we don't have the funds, something doesn't happen. The tariffs did up our firework cost. Fireworks alone are budgeted at twenty-two thousand dollars. So in, I believe, twenty minutes, that takes, is that sound right? It's about a twenty-minute show. If you didn't think of that, it was about a five thousand dollar increase with the tariffs. So.
And they gave us a discount for loyalty, for coming back every year. That's why it was just a.
And paying early.
Yeah, paying early discount.
So vendor out of Omaha. It's actually the same company that Culberson uses. So a lot of times, we get a little bit of a discount on freight because they're headed, they're doing both of us at once, right here. So Culberson actually comes to McCook and picks them up when they arrive in town. So yeah, it's just huge community benefits. We're just seeing if there's a way that ACE funds could help fund this. I guess I do, I think we want to run record to make sure everyone knows that this is not sponsored by McCook Christian Church. This is Southwest Nebraska Freedom Festival. So the church puts money in strictly as a sponsor, just like any other business in the community. So they are not like, it doesn't go into the general account or anything like that. It is their own thing that we do. And we did, one other change we made this year is charging our food vendors, because it is a one-hundred percent free event. We are charging our food vendors now because we have to pay the county to use the fairgrounds and to use the electricity. So we are charging them fifty dollars to help offset some of that cost, so.
The county gives a donation in the use of the property?
They do in exchange with us parking cars during.
So we can park cars one night so that we can use the midway.
There's no money, not this time.
Yeah.
We were very rich in last year, though, when the storm came up. They let us move everything inside.
So they'll set up our stage, they, I want to say chill, that's not the right word. They leveled the midway for us. They set up all the electricity for us for the event and for the band. So they, the county puts a lot into this, that they're really seeing nothing off of it also. So yes, we paid for that in exchange, but they have a lot of hours with the petting zoo. They bring the panels, so all of that. They have all the trash cans set out for us. And then last year in that rain, they, like, within hours have the kid blinger ready for us to come right into. So we can't think enough for that last year, so.
Have any of you guys been up there to that?
I have.
I, I've worked it. And there's, there's literally a zillion kids and families up there.
So it takes, like I said, it takes about two hundred and forty volunteer hours a day up. There's nothing to lead up to that point. So you figure there's three hundred and fifty, four hundred hours of volunteering that happens for this event. Working with Methodist Church, other groups, they bring, you know, we use their picnic tables. E-Freeze helped us throughout the years do like bingo and things like that, so.
Gene, if we use ACE funds, do they need to have an ACE poster or something up there?
No, I don't think so. But my suggestion is, I would, I would suggest, I would like to see the city staff develop an application form with guidelines and bring it back for our approval. And then, you know, I'm, I'm all for this. I think, I think this, you're right, Jamie, this meets some of the criteria that ACE funds were, are meant for. So we're going to give you the money probably tonight, but what I would like to do is, once we have an application form, would you please come back in, fill it out, so that in, in the future, then, when people come in and say, well, you guys got to do it, but you didn't have to fill out the application.
No.
You fill out the application. Here it is, it's on record, you know, so we have a record, so, because I'm sure there's going to be people in the future, you can come back next year, excuse me, you can come back next year again for money. So yeah, this is, I totally agree. Is that okay with the city staff?
Yeah. I even think, I even think if we give some money, if we have a banner or something for ACE, you know what I mean?
Well, that's fine.
Explaining what it is, because you don't know.
If that's what you're going to do, I mean, yeah.
And we'll put you in all of our advertising, we just need to know if you want City of McCook or ACE funds, like how you want us to put that in our advertising. That's what, yeah, so we just, however, we need to put that, it'll be in our banners. If we can do an extra banner, it'll be in our radio ads, all that.
I, I appreciate you having a good thing. It comes, it helps us then recruit for next year when we sign people up for the Choice Gas Program. Do you want to make a motion and I'll get you all that?
Yes, you can.
I'm going to approve the request for use of ACE funds in an amount of one thousand five hundred dollars from the Southwest Nebraska Freedom Festival for the Fourth of July, twenty-twenty-five fireworks display. I'll say that.
Any other discussion?
I'm just saying, we also appreciate the city staff, like, there's a lot that they do for us also. I just thought about that, is some of the flag, the fire trucks, a water truck, like. So we do also appreciate the City of McCook, because they've already been sponsoring with some of that type of stuff. So we do greatly appreciate that, too.
And if anybody wants to be a donkey or a duck tank, take an ace.
I think the water guy.
That's right.
You did say donkey and not donkey.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those are favored vote, yep, those things. You got it?
Thank you guys very much.
Thanks, guys. It's cool, though.
Okay, next item on the agenda is update from Millard Associates regarding the Water Resources Recovery Facility. David.
How you doing? Public means that is over here in Milwaukee. We've only got about sixty flights. We'll keep it short and sweet, I appreciate everybody. The first thing is, it's a Water Resource Recovery Facility, WWR, or WRRF. Everybody hates that term, but that is a new industry standard, because wastewater treatment facility apparently is not acceptable anymore. So yeah, I've heard a lot of grief from this whole site. But that is the technical term, that's what will be on our plans, actually, is Water Resource Recovery Facility. But that is your wastewater plant. It kind of makes sense.
Pat says he's not changing the sign.
Yeah, Pat says he's not changing the sign, so that's fine.
That was a bridge in the files we have over in the admin office, so.
It's, it's like, we're getting funded through the Clean Water SRF back, you know, if you get funded through that, that's wastewater, so why they call it Clean Water? We'll, we'll try and make this brief. A lot of you guys went through, when we did tours, when we started this, on how, what, picked the process, went to the public hearing to pick the process. We have followed that plan pretty much. I just wanted to have an update to the council, so you guys kind of see where we're at, what we've done. We've had to move it a little bit, but we will just keep going through. So this is your existing site plan. I just do this to let you guys know, the three big ponds are part of your water treatment facility. They're at the wastewater facility, so all the buildings in the lower right-hand corner of this is your, I don't know if you can see by point. The actual wastewater treatment facility is the round tanks and the big square buildings, that's our actual wastewater treatment facility. But all of our waste from the water treatment plant also comes out here, so we kind of have it consolidated. But when I look down, this is the focus of our existing site plan. As you can see, if you kind of envision the fence lines around there and the road, we have a tight space. And we have a lot of buildings out there that are covering that area that we want to build on. This was started in nineteen fifties, so a lot of this plant, majority was built in nineteen fifties. We did updates in nineties and two thousand and four, so we've been doing a lot of work with it to keep meeting regulations and treatment and discharge limits. But when you kind of look at this, like I said, it's been additions and plant additions, but there's not a lot of space to cover. We have a lot of river, we have to keep this plant running while we build a new one. And when you look at these building layouts, and I said, I've labeled all of them, there's an admin building, there's sledge processing, there's digesters, there's wastewater. All that happens on this side before we discharge to the river. And then you look at all these black lines, and this is the existing just process piping. It has nothing to do with electrical that runs between all these buildings. So as you can see, there's not a lot of space on there to build anything and keep it all running. But as we had talked about, we do have a plan that we're going to try and get to, and that's this. So I'm going to spend most of my time on this slide, and this is a majority of the presentation, but we're going to, if you see the red, kind of the red building, that's our new headworks building. We're going to divert the wastewater directly north of there into this building. And this is where what we call pre-treatment is going to happen. We're going to pick out what they call screenings, or take out anything that's about a quarter inch or larger, we're going to screen it and remove it. Right now, you don't have that process. Right now, we have a grinder that grinds it up, but our grinders have been having issues, a lot of rags, what they call basically flushable wipes. Everybody, they go through our plan and just wreak havoc. So we have a screenings process that we'll take out first. Then we'll do grit removal, which the city does now, but we're going to put it in this building. And then we will have a controls or electrical building in here, we're going to put all our new electrical in here, we're going to update the service. Today, we're onsite with the electrical engineers, the instrumentation controls. Pat said I picked the hottest day to try and do it so far this year. And so, we didn't get to change shirts, so I'm sorry. It's mainly the wastewater plant, but they're my bills, so. Our fan press, we're processing solids right now in the admin building, is a temporary. We're moving that into this building. And to the east of this, right next to the red building, you'll see a big gray that's over on top of our digesters. That really is the only building that we are going to demo, is with two digesters and the pump room. And we're going to put a concrete slab there to process solids. So we're going to build all of this down the north-south here on the east, east, or the west side of the plant and keep everything on the east running, so we can build the whole thing and try to keep that going, so we phase it in. From the red building, it will gravity flow down to the two green basins. Those are our sequencing batch reactors that does all the treatment for the City of McCook. So when you look at those two green basins, they take up the space of basically everything to the east of that. The orange part between there is what we call an equalization tank. So we have to process a lot of wastewater at a very fast rate. So let's say you guys bring in a half million gallons a day of wastewater, we have to run it through these tanks and just keep going and keep processing waste. So we can't take that four thousand gallons a minute and put it through our UV system or put it through anything at that faster rate without upgrading everything. So we just build an equalization tank, we'll let it out at a slower rate, and that way the rest of our equipment can still handle what we have. The two blue basins are our new sledge processing, they are aerobic digesters. So that will replace the two that we're demoing, which are anaerobic digesters, the circles across the gray pad. And the yellow square is a future SBR. If we ever grow and expand, we have a place called out for that. So as you can see, the only really part of the demo is that north digester to build this. And that concrete pad that goes there for sledge processing, we can do it at the very end. So we can have the plant running, we can have everything else running, then we'll demo it and put that concrete pad in. That's the only thing really I think we'll have to deal with. So we have a plan. We'll see how it goes, but we have a plan. What we've been spending a lot of time in is, if you look at that red building, and I'm just bowling it up here for you, I put it into four parts. The green part is actually going to have wastewater flowing through it. The first two squares, it's hard to see on this, but the first two squares is actually the screening. Basically, it's going to be a garbage truck or garbage bin. Then it keeps flowing through, the circular part of that is the grit removal, it's called a vortex grit removal. So it's a little different than the process we have now. It's very easy to operate, it has very low maintenance, and it circles, it runs in a circle, the grit goes down to the bottom, we pump it out. Again, we wash it, and it falls in the same trash can, we haul that old can out and away it goes. So that's the whole green part of this. The red is our electrical room, so we'll have panels and things that, in that green room, that has, everything's to be explosion proof. You have raw wastewater in there, so if you think about that, that all has to be explosion proof, so if we don't put panels anywhere that have an issue, they'll go into the red room, the electrical room. The kind of orange area is our fan press, that is actually our fan press that we have now. We'll relocate that building. The thing sticking out to the east of that building, the line that goes out is our auger, that's where our concrete pad is going to be, where we're going to process solids. So it augers out that building, dumps it out, city's going to take care of that. And that's, through some of these meetings we've had, when we've been trying to find and redefine this building plan, those are some of the options we went up with, how we get the sledge out of here, how we put all of our drains and stuff in here. We've been doing that over the past several months. And the blue part, all of that is blowers. There are existing blowers to use in the process, we need air to grow the bacteria to make the treatment. We also need air to process the sledge. So there's, actually, there's eight blowers shown, right now we'll only need five of them. Again, we've kind of set it up for future, so we know what the piping looks like and where they go. So we've laid it out, so we have all the future ready to expand. We won't build all those at this time, but I wanted to show everybody what that looks like. So it's a fifty by seventy building, and so it's a really, not a large building, but I think it has enough space to work, you know, it looks like that center of that blower building has a lot of space, but if you ever have to take one out, slide it around and get it out the door, we try to account for that for operational issues. So any questions? I'll keep rambling on. The only thing, I said, real quickly then, the rest of this, again, we're color-coded, the red is our headworks building, is what we call it. The green line to the west of that is what we call the inflow line, so that's all the wastewater coming in from the whole City of McCook, it'll go through that building, then it dumps to the two green tanks. That's how we get the wastewater in and we treat it. From there, it flows to that orange tank between there. So if you guys remember, in SBR, one of them is treating at one time, one of them's receiving waste. So we have to have at least two of them running. So as the one is treating, the other one's receiving waste, and then when it's done treating, it dumps to the orange, and it goes out the blue line through our UV, and out it goes. Again, the blue is digesters, so the sludge, the bacteria that we grow to treat the system, goes to those blue digesters, then it's pumped back up to our fan press, it's in our headworks building. And the yellow again is future. And just to give you an idea, I also color-coded these, but if you think about taking a slice through the ground, this is a plan, from a plan view, which you had to a profile. So our headworks building, we have it set up, it's only going to be about six, eight feet deep, because our wastewater comes in very shallow, so I don't have a big, deep building, it's a really nice-sized building. We're only traveling about four or five feet deep with our inflow line. And the tank's then, at the end of that green line that runs through the headworks, that big green, deeper green line, the maximum that we will have is at about elevation seventy-one or seventy-five. So the whole bottom is tank for treatment. But when you look at the little dash line, that's our ground line across there, as you cut through the tanks, we're going to be sticking out about ten, twelve feet on one side, the rest of it's all going to be covered and buried under dirt, so we'll have good treatment. And we don't have to adjust the ground much. Only if you just figure out where to put all that dirt and dig those tanks out of. We worked on that today a little bit. There we go. See, done. So really, it's nice, because like I said, we don't do a lot of dirt work, we'll have extra dirt, we'll be hauling that out. But the tanks, elevation-wise, fit in there really kind of nice. It falls off pretty good to the south, so the south is to the left of the sheet. It falls off south, hopefully goes toward the river. But we'll just, we can just get in the dirt right to the tank, and that will not hurt anything at all. So optimize what we have. The blue line, I just want to show you the blue line, so from the orange tank, everything is dumped to there, we will have to pump it out of there. That's the only thing we'll have to do, is that will have to be pumped out of there, or because our tank is deeper than where we discharge to. So if you look at the bottom of the orange tank, and where we discharge is the end of the blue line, I have to pump it up. So our thought was, is we will pick it up from the bottom of the tank up to about five feet deep. We lay it, we're going to miss all those storm sewer lines, electrical lines, getting over and discharging it there to the east. And away it goes, flows down, it's not very deep, everybody can work on it. I think we have a good plan. So again, the only thing we're going to demo is the two buildings on the left, there's also a drying bed, but that's only shallow, just shallow footings, that thing goes away. We can demo that anytime, they're actually not used right now by the city, probably all. The two, demolition of the two digesters and the digester building. And then we're also, as part of the bid, we talked about that RBC building, even though it's, it's a very large building, it has big holes in it for the RBCs that turn into our treatment now. We're going to bid as an alternate to fill that in, put a floor in there, and the city then can use that for storage. If we're over budget for some reason, then that will be what first thing we cut. But we'd like to have that for storage, we'd like to renovate that and have that for storage right onsite. But all the rest of these buildings, the circles and everything, all can go away, in any given time. But all the rest of these buildings, the circles and everything, all can go away, in any given time, so.
Okay, we have Mammoth sitting back there, and they're building these ski slopes for us. In southwest Nebraska, we can winter ski, so you might add that to our ski slopes, I mean, you might work out a deal with them.
Your dirt pile, why, I already asked him to make sure that we weren't piling that dirt on top of the sewer line that goes around there, so. That was my first concern when I drove out of there, so I feel much better now. They took care of that for us.
When this whole phase gets done, right, how far into the future does that take us?
So, design is, we, we added, I want to say quarter growth every year, which is more than you guys have experienced, and it still takes you at least twenty years. And if, at that point in time, in twenty years, we can always add another basin, and it fills another twenty to spare, so. But we have right now, I think, tons of treatment capacity, which will be really nice. So, we have some extra flow, the pumps, everything's designed for the future, the max value.
Uh, it's just good for people to hear.
Yeah, yeah.
How long it's gonna take us up to the future, that's all.
Well, our current plan, fortunately, it was built in the fifties, unfortunately, it was built in the seventies, um, you know, the UV is the newest.
Nineties, yeah. We did the bath upgrade in two thousand and four, and that was actually the latest, that was EPA mandated portion that we had to do in two thousand and four, so that's actually twenty years old. It still is functioning, but due to changing regulations, we're gonna have issues meeting future requirements, so.
I know, we've talked about it with council, I'm not sure the public realizes, are we the last RBC method of water cleaning that you're aware of, wastewater?
You're the last one in Nebraska that I'm aware of, I'm sure there's some out there, but the, there's not many at all. I mean, it was a great technology, but the only failure is those shafts, when they turn a million, two million times, they fail. It's just mechanically, they fail.
How many have we lost?
I was just gonna say, how, we're.
We have eleven left, right, lost four? Yep, so we had fifteen total, we have eleven left.
And getting them out is.
Is not fun. But, and that, yeah, that'll be, it's a technology that's worked well for you guys, honestly, it worked really well, and it still is working today.
We didn't, we didn't limit it.
Yep.
Usually, maybe just eleven. And as, as federal requirements become more and more stringent, this is gonna be a method that's going to make sure we comply with whatever those regulations may be down the road, so. It's a very clean form of wastewater removal.
And they find us if we're not complying, correct? They find us if we're not complying.
Right, we, we don't have a choice, we're gonna have to do something, because at some point in time, those requirements are becoming more and more stringent.
Costs to see the wind.
Yeah, yeah. And this is not gonna last forever, like Chris was saying, as those acts will break. And you start whittling down the number of RBCs that you have. And if you get to a point where you don't have sufficient numbers of RBCs to clean, then you're really into some hot water. So, this, this is necessary, we, we can't wait on this.
No, it's necessary, we don't want hot water.
No, and we, we've been down that road. But, but really, the RBCs just kinda, I'll confirm what needs to, is, we have fifteen of these that are treated, we're treating, right? Every time you lose one, behind it, you have the biological aerated filter that is doing additional treatment, so it's picking up that load. There's gonna be a point when you lose enough of the RBCs that spin these big discs, that that can't pick up the load, and then we will be in trouble. So, that, that's where this is, those things, once they start failing, right now, we have equipment downstream that can pick up that load and can continue to be treatment. But there's, comes a point when we can't fix those, they keep failing, and then we'll, then we will be in trouble. So, that was kinda the issue, we wanted to look long-term, make sure we have it solved, so.
And it also, as you lose some of those RBCs, that load is added to those others, and it builds more weight on those RBCs, so. More, we want to cause them to fail sooner, and give them more growth on each one when you lose them.
About thirty thousand dollars to get out of there once again. Two mugs every year, for one break.
Any other questions, council?
Are we still thinking twenty twenty-six as far as construction?
Construction, yep.
Thank you.
A lot of requests to cover your facility, right?
Yes, and I were gonna say wastewater treatment, probably, but it'll, I'll be used to it. But we are, I mean, the council's already authorized financing, we'll get a little public and private, we're actually gonna have a conversation, uh, here. Near future, to talk about all of our projects together, uh, both the wastewater treatment plant, the Wharf. And then also, uh, the sports complex project, to make sure that it's hiding fins. But, uh, we appreciate it, and Chris will be able to be the one who can pass the job, along with Pat, John, and everybody else on their group.
Thank you. No, but, next item is an update regarding the extension for the West Fifth Street closing, you're up.
And last meeting, we talked with, we had, actually, Van Kirk was at the meeting to talk about, uh, getting completion. They've made progress, probably not as quick as I'd, I'd like to have seen. I asked them to try to pinpoint a date, so that we could see when we could get that street closing, our street closing, street open back up. Um, the date he's giving me from Van Kirk would be June twenty-seventh, to open the street up. Um, they've actually, the water main is in, they're working up, they've had about a third of the service lines put in. Probably what would, like, I expect they'd have the water main in by the end of this week, but they have all the concrete replacing for each service connection that they have. So that they would have to leave that blocked off, so that you're not driving on those surfaced areas, so that's the date that they've given me to open that street back up, June twenty-seventh.
Any questions? Thank you.
But I'll push them apart.
Keep pushing.
They try it sooner, um, it's.
People miss that street.
It is.
Yeah, I see horse trailers going all over the place.
I don't know if I agree with their argument, but they claimed that they were gonna start right off the bat on that street, and we asked them to wait till school was out, because that wasn't. Just that the traffic with school would have been too much.
That's true.
Try and get it as fast as possible.
I do too. Okay, thank you. Hey, the next item on the agenda is to approve the second amendment to the agreement between the city of McCook and Mammoth Sports Construction LLC. For the construction of the Gerald L. Walters Youth Sports Complex.
I'm looking to approve the second amendment to the agreement between the city of McCook and Mammoth Sports Con- Construction LLC. For the construction of the Gerald L. Walter Walters Youth Sports Complex.
Okay, any discussion?
We got our friends here.
I don't know if you guys wanna come up, or a couple of you wanna come up?
We're gonna get two smart ones instead of just one this time.
Oh, wow. Nice to see you guys.
It's great to see you guys.
Well, nice to see everyone again, it's great to be here, um, this is Nick. Uh, Nick's kinda the architect behind all of the, the buildings on the project. It's always great to overlap with Miller Associates, sadly, our weekly meetings are coming down to a bi-weekly meetings, and, uh, yeah. And then this is our mission statement, um, building places where passion and meaning collide. I brought this up at every meeting, um, still very excited for the city of McCook to have this done for you guys. This is our team, Troy is in the back with Jason, um, so I just wanted to introduce those faces as well. Uh, and this is kind of where we're at, um, we've talked about kind of our packaging throughout, uh, the project, all the way from the interview till now. We have package A and package B amendment executed, uh, we are here now for that package C, the building design. As you can see here on the timeline, we have, um, undergone quite a bit of construction, um, there's a sled hill, I hear that's up there. So, that's kinda where we're at today, and, um, we're excited for the progress. And for those that are interested, so we have all the tops were removed, and now we are now just kind of forming the clay up to the elevations that the ball fields will be. Parking lot, the buildings, the soccer field, um, so that's, that's a very exciting moment for civil, um, so, that's kinda where we're at. And then, moving on to kind of that number slide, so just highlighting that overall budget that we were shooting for before the project. These presentations, package A is guaranteed, package B is guaranteed, um, because those are executed amendments. And now we have package C is a guaranteed number, it's not an estimated number. Package C, we were, um, actually fortunate to utilize as many locals as we could, um, local subs for the project. And that's kinda where our, our number ended up being under budget, about that thirty-two thousand. But I just wanted to point out that we did utilize as many locals as we could to, um, also stay within that budget.
Thank you.
Uh, and then here is the front of that, that building, um, Nick, if you wanted to touch on this at all. I'm sure just, uh. Uh, two, um, crying rooms. And this is our view from the inside of the ballpark, you have your concessions here on the left side, and then, uh, the restroom on the right. And I threw in a floor plan for us to see, I'm not sure how well you can actually see that. Um, but I just wanted to let you guys see kind of what we, uh, what we have on our plans for the restrooms, janitors, closet, uh, mechanical.
I'm counting, yep.
I think it's, uh, sixteen in the women's and nine in total, and the men's, so.
You guys are awesome.
And then, here on the east side, concessions, mechanical, two changing stations for umpires, ticketing, and some storage. And then the breezeway that Nick was talking about.
Where's the, uh. Umpire junior, or?
The bottom right.
Bottom right.
Did you get the massage chairs put in there?
I did, yes. I can't say that, I got that in there.
So, beer cooler, something to help.
Well, I know, I know the restrooms were a question last time, so I wanted to make sure we got that in on today.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Any other, any other questions on the building, there are.
So, you got women on the, on the top and the men down below, okay. And what, then, in the next, what's next to the, the men's, there, those spaces, the chatroom, what?
This is a mechanical room, and this is.
Oh, but yeah, I'm sorry.
And there's a family restroom in that little corner too.
Okay.
And then, this is where your two umpire changing stations.
Yep.
Ticketing, storage, and then your concessions.
One thing we've been working on here recently, or the public health unit services has some questions as far as what we want that concession to look like, so. Actually had a conversation with Sean about that on Friday, um, and then we'll have some continuing conversations with the public health unit services, just to make sure we're compliant. Uh, trying to make sure that, uh, we don't overbuild if we don't have to, so if we're just gonna be serving hot dogs and nachos and whatever, probably don't need to worry about some of the drains and traps if you might have to otherwise, so.
Primary, uh, you're gonna have to go over the cop mill or something.
Food trucks, we do have that, that extra land in there.
Yeah.
Um, it's a drop-off slash food truck land.
Yeah.
One part, so, there are other options too.
Do you have a ticket place in there?
Right, right, right.
Right there?
Yep, so these three windows will allow for ticketing, and then, and you enter.
Oh, so, so, okay, that's, that's north and right.
Yep, so this is your ballpark.
Okay, parking lots down there.
Come up to the tickets, come through, and then also from this side, come to the concessions, hang out at the. And then this is kind of a privacy wall, um, just to make codes, make sure, I don't know, you don't have visibility into the restrooms. And there will be, so we do have fence coming from the west side to the building, and the east side out, that will surrender at the complex essentially. And then there will be a gate here in the center as well, um, so there, you can lock up the entire complex whenever you want, and the gates can open, and it helps with ticketing as well. Um, it's kind of that flow. Any other questions on the building before I move on here?
Good job, Nick.
Uh, this is maybe the sled hill of McCook, along with some of our excavators going out there. Uh, we just wanted to give another progress shot, um, but our guys are, are out there, the summer hours are, are nice, 'cause sun's up earlier, sun's up later, um, they're able to work, um, they are moving. And then just wanted to give that overview of what, uh, Parker looked like after this, this phase. And I just wanted to give another example again, you've seen this one, but I'm excited to show kind of what McCook will look like before and after. And here's our schedule, I just have this on here, um, in case there are any questions regarding it, um, but we are here already middle-ish of June, um, so, pouring the clay, getting that to grades.
And with this contract, not only are we talking about concessions, but we're also talking about the, this building as well, so that's gonna be over on the west side of the facility. It's the extreme far west side of the building.
Yeah, that is. That is right here on the west end, so there will be a sidewalk that connects it to the, to the main facility, if you will, main entry point, there will be their own parking lot, entry. Um, but this is that main is building, and that is also part of this, this package, it's an M A, it's a full build of that, that building.
Can you kind of talk, Ryan, though, we're talking about package C, package B, how do you typically start the project, and then how do you move throughout that build out?
So, the parking lot is gonna generally be their staging area, um, just because it's gonna have that aggregate layer, and, uh, it's kind of like the O-four staging. We will move into kind of the center quad, and then we will work our way down here, and then soccer will kind of come last. So, we will start essentially at that twelve, and then go clockwise around.
And we are looking if there's a way to generate additional revenue, which would be, be your fundraising, or for, um, sponsorships, or hand rights, or grants, or whatever the case may be. We can get a second soccer field in, we would like to try to do that. But that's all contingent on, on what we're, we brought in.
Yeah, and the thought here was, we have the eight fields that were kind of suggested to host these bigger tournaments, um, to bring more folks here to McCook. So, this soccer field will kind of stand alone as a championship soccer field, opposed to a multipurpose field. So, you'd have your, sorry, man, you'd have your soccer field, championship field, softball championship, and your baseball championship.
So, is the parking lot, does that not go to the road there yet?
It won't in this phase, so future phases, it will come down.
No, I mean, just the inlets on both sides, it looks like it's, like there's grass, right?
Sorry, yeah, that is, it's on our end, there will be a connection.
Okay, I just didn't know, I was like, there was.
Yeah.
Some reason for that?
No, no, okay, so we will, you typically wanna come from the east, come out the west, I just wish drop-offs could kind of long here.
So, okay, then, I bought this F Street, and then. So, okay, then I bought this S Street and then T Street, right, eight?
Uh, you've got S, T, yeah.
And then great, so then, then you got Seventeenth on going down, and then that would be Sixteenth Street, right? So you could come in either from the Sixteenth Street or from either one of those, from.
To, to begin with, to begin with, it would be Seventeenth Street, it'd be uh.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth. And then we would uh connect off of S Street, and then we bring, just north of Seventeenth Street, we would actually bring that to the north, clear the northwest side of the park, and then we would stretch S Street east to the end of the parking lot area.
Yeah.
So that way you could get your commercial lots and your uh multifamily residential lot.
So you mentioned the fencing, where does, does that just go around the ballparks, or does that go around the, the soccer field as well?
Yep, so there will be fence from soccer field to the main building, that'll come wrapped all the way to the building. On the sidewalk here to baseball field, and then there's another fence that connects from baseball to softball up to batting cages, and the batting cage here, here as well, and then I forget exactly how it ties out on this north end, but it'll tie somewhere along there.
So what are the fences like for the actual ballpark, like the outfield fences, the chain link or what's the?
They'll be the black final, um, chain link things.
The gray is not the trail then, that we, the.
No, this is.
Right, so that's gonna be outside of that.
The trail actually might be on the inside.
Inside.
And then connect, we'll leave some on over here, and then down here as well, up to the future multifamily residential, and then to the other trail.
So that will be clearly accessible to the public, right?
Right, right, yep.
The road, uh, I guess T Street, S and T Street, will that go all the way to the highway then?
Um, yeah, yeah, S Street right now, but ultimately T Street.
So S is between Samway and the old Garnet one?
Yeah.
And then that's, you said you're gonna carry stuff across, go across the highway?
Yes.
No.
No, no, no.
No change.
No, you, we, we went to T and T Street.
Yeah.
It was originally.
We can serve, we can serve, we go another block, or we can come up, we ride a MBD's substation, and we can serve all the way up and back to the south. If you came here, you were about thirty feet deep with sewer.
Oh.
And so that's a little hard to get equipment in there and do, so if we went around the back, we can serve a lot larger area, have a lot better extension.
So there's one more street that's platted, that's U Street, and so the sewer will come through what is platted is U Street, you know, that's not, you don't see that up there right now. That'll go under the highway and connect to that unimproved lot over there, and then.
So there's, so when this is complete, there'll be stuff going across the highway then, or is that another project?
Sewer, sewer, we already have, we already have water on the highway, we've never had sewer on the highway, so this gets sewer up there.
Great, good deal.
And then we had talked about a splash pad on that side of this, or playgrounds, kind of things, where are those, kind of, if it were this way?
Kind of the central location here, is where we envision those, um, they could fit something here too, but this isn't your ideal location, kind of with the grades that we have out there.
You have the Taco John's.
Yep, the John's splash pad. And then you, we, we had talked about, like tennis court or pickle, uh, that'd be up in the northwest corner, right?
Correct, yep. Yeah, so full build out, kind of the master plan of having pickleball, tennis, basketball in this corner, additional parking along this east side. Feature field house with indoor tennis and turf open field, additional parking to feed the, the entire park, and then a soft, or soccer field here on that southwest corner.
It does look good. Keep on trucking.
We will.
Yeah, okay.
In the contract, um, it's similar to the other contracts that we've already approved, uh, the council approved. Um, same obligations on both ends, uh, the big thing that's different is the price, as was mentioned, is two point six six million dollars. Uh, it's got the appendix, I think there are two appendices, appendices attached to it, just kind of with descriptions of what's gonna be included in package C. But that's gonna be the very tail end of the project, so, um, I don't know, does that overlap, I mean, how does that overlap with the construction of the horizontal as well? Will you start working on that while you're still completing the horizontal side of fence?
We will, um, and that's some of the Eric will have on his schedule, but I know he will want to use these building pads at a similar time as moving the rest of the concrete work, um, so I would assume that that part would go. I know the big goal is to kind of get the buildings, the walls, the roof, and everything up for winter, and then work on the inside of the buildings as it gets cold. And one time we were here, it's seventeen below zero, so it is. But that is the goal, is to get the buildings vertical and up before winter comes.
Maybe we should build a dome.
Big sale.
We'd buy it too small.
Any other questions? All right, anything else?
I'll just thank you guys again, it's been a pleasure.
Thanks for coming out, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, who voted for the question? All those in favor vote yes, who's saying? I vote to cast Jane, I vote to cast Dave. Okay. Any other subject?
Yeah, um, I've got a couple of updates, um. Tomorrow, uh, we have our fraud rating phone call with Moody's, uh, Lee and I already started kind of working through the questions we had today, we'll be able to. Um, so we'll be ready to go tomorrow at ten thirty when we have that phone call. Um, pro forma is done, uh, and it's available, um, we're more than happy to share that with, with everyone. Um, feasibility study will soon be completed, uh, the pro forma had to be done beforehand. Um, but uh, we're comfortable with the numbers, and we appreciate Sports Facility company is working with us on that.
Hopefully it's feasible.
I, I think, I think it's feasible, I think the numbers are pretty good, it's kind of exciting, we'll get what this might mean for our community in the future, so. And I just wanted to share, uh, we received notice that we got the Sherwood Foundation grant, uh, for the amount of five hundred thousand dollars this past week, so that's awesome. So that puts our total up to twelve and a half million dollars, uh, that we have available for this project. Uh, we're continuing to work on other grants, we're gonna need Jessica for the tomorrow, uh, to work, and hopefully finish up the Dory Grant, I don't know if I can look at that, I don't even know, we're probably gonna have to kick that computer up or whatever, so. Um, but uh, we've uh, got a lot of good momentum going right now, um, and we really appreciate the Sherwood Foundation, and everybody else that's contributed to this. We've got the hospital that's made a pledge, um, we've got uh NBD that's come in with some grant funding, uh, to the tune of eight hundred thousand dollars on the RCRP grant, and just under five hundred thousand dollars on the CCCFF grant. And we're just gonna keep moving forward, and it's not on any grants, I can't remember. But good job to Jessica and Tara and Kyle, the first, they're doing a good job of walking through these grants. We're gonna make up that difference.
Thank you. That's wonderful, and that's great to have another five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is to approve the twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty-six budget schedule. We have a motion.
I'm going to approve the twenty twenty-five twenty dash twenty twenty-six budget schedule, setting the date for presentation of the budget and public review as August.
When?
What?
When? Explain. Yeah, Monday or Tuesday, the eleventh or twelfth, I should have had it on Tuesday, but I think that was thinking of a contract, planning issue, so, either day works.
Eleventh or twelfth?
Either one.
So?
Eleven.
Eleven?
Eleventh?
Eleven.
Eleventh?
Is that a meeting night?
Twenty twenty-five.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor vote yes, who's saying? Okay, I vote to cast Jane, I vote to cast Dave. Uh, council comments, anyone have any comments?
Hey, man, we talked Facebook a little bit earlier, and I saw a very heartwarming entry on Facebook today for my disc golf people that really wanted to compliment Ron Maris, and Tyler Kalinski, and Kyle Potoff, and Nick Schneider, for all the help that you guys have put together. I'm sure more wrong than the other three, I'm sure. The pads and the everything, it's going on for our second disc course, which is just exciting, we had two courses now in McCook. I, I compare Kelly Park to Heritage Hills, Brian dragged me up there, and it's almost an ambulance call, so. Barney Park being flatter, I'm excited for Barney Park, guys, I really am, but, uh, it was positive PR for the city, Facebook, uh, disc golf people, the promoters.
They've been in Taylor.
There you go, and, yeah, they were equally excited, and it's, it's coming together nicely.
And the hospital.
Hospital.
Yeah, so I just wanted to compliment the city staff, and excellent PR, thank you.
It just goes to show working together, what we can achieve.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, any other comments? Hey, I do, I have this meeting adjourned at seven oh seven PM.
And Jamie, yeah. Thank you everybody for coming.